I'm calling to order the Thursday, June 7, 2012 meeting in the Planning Commission. Roll call shows that Commissioner Genade and Laurel are absent. The other commissioners are present and accounted for. Now is the opportunity for public comment on items not on our agenda. And seeing that there is nobody out in the public, at least in this room, we'll move to the consent calendar. And we have the Planning Commission minutes of May 17, 2012. Any comments or corrections?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
I'm actually going to make some corrections. I'm sorry. So you're a little ahead. David, I'm going to make some corrections, at least on the comments I made, because in reading them, it sounds as though I was not particularly positively disposed to the project. And I believe I said a number of nice things, including the fact that I was very impressed with the project, that the applicant had responded and made changes on an ongoing basis based on A and S feedback. And I was very impressed by that. That, you know, all things considered, I would have preferred to see more retail, but understood that that, in fact, may not have been possible. And my comment with regard to the rear yard setback exception taken away for the adjacent single-family homeowners was as with respect to the BMRs, that taking away from a individual property owner for a BMR, I didn't think was a good precedent, although I'm fully supportive of affordable housing. So if you could make those corrections. Any other changes or corrections?
I wasn't here.
Okay.
No.
So I would entertain a motion?
Go, Mike.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as corrected from our May 17 meeting.
Second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? Anybody abstaining? You're welcome to either approve or abstain. It's your choice.
I'll approve.
Okay. So it passes five, nothing. All right. The public hearing item, number two on our agenda, 12 CA 02, Steve Los Altos payday lending prohibition. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you. This is an ordinance that's been prepared at the direction of the council. Basically, the purpose is to prohibit payday lending within the city. And the city attorney's strategy here is to redefine what we mean by banks and offices in our zoning code and essentially just take it out as it won't be a permitted use, because it won't be something that's described as being allowed. So the main changes really are to the office and bank definitions. Banks are still, I think there's been some question that banks are still defined as an office use. So we're not changing that. It's just taking the other financial institutions part out of that. I won't go into the reasons for the ordinance. I think that's fairly clear in the staff report. Be certainly happy to answer any questions and as it might relate to the existing code and whatnot. I have a copy of the code here we can reference if we need to.
I'm just curious, what was the catalyst behind this?
I was wondering the same thing.
Some communities are having a hard time regulating these types of businesses. San Jose, for example, is getting into some trouble with them and some of the activities that they tend to draw. And so we're using our zoning authority to restrict them, much the way we did with the medicinal marijuana uses.
Yeah. A big thing is payday lending facilities tend to prey on the less fortunate, the people who need, you know, the greatest help. This seems to be a mechanism that they use. And when you look at the interest rate charged, it's like a 400% interest rate, which is amazing. So it's, so I think we're really trying to not allow this kind of practice in our town.
Was the --
I have a question. Okay.
Sorry. Was the city council adoption on each of these occasions, was it unanimous?
I'm not sure of that. They adopted a moratorium. And I'm hearing that was unanimous.
I believe I may have been the commissioner at that in attendance, or at least I was in attendance at that meeting. And I believe it was unanimous.
David, I had a conversation with the city council earlier this evening.
Excuse me. I had a conversation with the city council early this evening, because the question had come up whether by drafting, by eliminating office use, the financial institutions, whether it would in any way prohibit people who were doing mortgage lending or other financial kinds of services in town. And she indicated to me that that was not the intent, but she wanted to at least, she suggested I ask staff whether that, in fact, was the case, that we were, the way she characterized it was that the banking, the definition of banking was being expanded further to encompass all those kinds of activities, but there was going to be a very specific prohibition against the payday lending or check cashing businesses. And I just wanted to make sure that that was your understanding and the wording reflected that.
It is. And in the suggested amendment to the code, we're redefining banks to mean financial institutions, and we're actually adding a definition of a bank.
Right. I say, bank is a new definition in our zoning code.
That's right. This would be a new definition. And I think
Right. And because we added that definition, that is why they, our attorney is striking the other financial institutions, because it is encompassed now in a definition of bank.
Right. That was my question. My question was really whether we had sufficiently broadened banking to encompass all sorts of other lenders and financial activities that, in fact, occur in this town, since we have a range of loan brokers and other kinds of mortgage and lending institutions. If you look all up and down San Antonio Road
Right.
There are a whole raft of different kinds of organizations. And I just wanted to make sure that we weren't inadvertently creating a problem.
I agree with that. And part of my question also kind of ties to this one.
I'd say if that was a concern, that we should articulate that in the action to the council. I'm not familiar enough with some of the terms that we're using, in terms of financial institutions, federally chartered banks, saving associations, industrial loan companies, credit unions. I'm not sure what those businesses encompass, really. But I think the, I hear the concern, understand the concern.
Again, I just want to make sure it's broad enough. I had actually hoped we would have members of the public here to, you know, inform us of things that perhaps, you know, may have been inadvertently left off. But I know from talking to the city council that the intention is not to exclude those. But I guess I would, my nickel comment here is that I would encourage staff and council to make sure that that definition is broad enough for all the businesses in town that we, in fact, do own.
That's, I'm afraid that it probably isn't. I mean, we have four categories within the financial institutions. And as a lawyer, I know I wouldn't want to be having to try to define
Right.
the category that we should have someone who's more like a CPA or a banker or somebody. Actually, look at this definition and make sure that it's, what we're trying to do, I think, is, you know, narrowly interpret this provision to limit it to a very small segment of financial services, the lending. And I'm guessing four categories, isn't it?
Right. I'm thinking of something like, you know, a brokerage firm.
Right. Is that an industrial loan company?
It's not clear to me that a brokerage firm clearly fits any of the
Right.
the entities as currently described. And some of the people who are doing mortgage lending and creative finance, you know.
VCs, you know.
What kind?
VCs that do a lot of financial related, is that
Mm-hmm.
one of these?
Aye.
Would we want no VCs in Los Alamos?
I agree with all the comments that are being made in terms of, I think we, I think we really need to make sure we're crafting.
So I think we, I want to make sure we don't get ahead of ourselves. So if we, and I apologize, I probably led us astray here. If we, do we have other specific questions for staff? If not, what I'd like to do is
Yes.
get the questions out and then open and close public comment, and then we can, we can
Okay.
hash at this more.
Okay. In the same vein here, because of this definition here, if you go to, on your code, to 14-34, we don't have it in front of us, sorry, guys, 14 dash, 14.34.040, number, which
Say the code again?
It says, we don't have it in front of us.
Okay.
What I, okay, what I did, unfortunately, what's brought before us is the one change, but what you don't see is how that change gets replicated throughout our zoning code. This is a shorthand by referencing it here. If you go to 14.34.040, in section, item B, it says banks, and it also says savings and loan institutions. So I recalled, question in the same vein as all of this, is savings and loan institutions, is that in our, it's not called out explicitly, but again, is that in our definition section here of banks? And if it is, then that zone, that code there should just refer to banks, if that's what we're defining.
Mm-hmm.
So I would say, let's get the definition of banks correct, and let's strike savings and loan institutions, unless the savings and loan institution does not fall into our definition of banks. Okay?
Okay. So I think, any other questions for staff? Okay. So what I'd like to do at this point is open and close, because I don't see anybody interested in commenting, public comment. And now, what I'd like to suggest is, anybody who would like to offer some additional comments or suggestions relative to what's being proposed here? We can go up and down, we can just sort of chime in. Right?
Just what if, what if it's a bank that's paid, is that legitimate or?
It's a good question.
I would say this ordinance would preclude that.
What?
It would preclude that use
But they do cash
within an existing institution.
But they do, they do not
They do cash checks.
They do provide advances. And it's not, I don't, I think they refer to them as advances, but it serves kind of the similar purpose as this, where I can get an advance while I'm waiting for my paycheck, which is the exact same.
On a credit card?
No.
On an account?
Okay. This is really, yeah. If you have a check that comes to you on the third of the month, but you need money on the first of the month and you can't cover it, they give you an advance, okay? And with that advance, they charge you like a $35 fee on that. So they are, they are performing the equivalent of what you get with the payday lending, except they don't call it that. They refer to it as a advance on a paycheck.
And if I
And this is, this happens with all major banks.
And in the same vein, and I don't know if they're still doing it, but people like H&R Block historically would give people advances on their tax refunds. And I don't know if there are other tax preparers in town or otherwise who do or did, and whether we are looking to prohibit those activities as well.
So I guess, you know, it kind of calls the question whether it's an activity that we're trying to prevent, or if it is a particular specialty where someone who, their sole business is, is this thing.
And was the prohibition because of the interest rate charged, or just, just the not wanting that business, period?
It preys on the less fortunate, and I think that's why they're trying to
It's, it's
keep it
It's a place for the unbanked to bank.
Yes.
Because a good percentage of our population
Pretty much.
has no banking relationship.
Yes.
And this is maybe better than nothing at all. I don't know.
My concern is, we allowed banks and financial institutions, and now we don't allow other financial institutions. And the purpose of that was just to limit this check cashing business. But I think we have, but if, there are only four categories defined under banks, we have inadvertently probably eliminated a lot more financial institutions that we, that are existing currently, and that we don't, we have no desire to prohibit.
Such as stock brokerage firms that may, that you
Mortgage brokers.
Borrow on margin, right?
Right. I mean, we also eliminated financial services. Everything falls under banks.
Correct.
I don't think that's, I think it's overly broad. I'm concerned it's overly broad. I'd like someone who is an expert in financial services to come up with the categories. This, to me, seems too narrow. I understand the intention.
It's very problematic.
I agree with the intention. I have no problem with the desired outcome. I just don't think this will accomplish it.
Okay. Any more comments or things that we think are missing? I think we've talked about brokerage firms, VCs, mortgage brokers, other financial services, tax preparers, banks which give advances.
Payday loans.
I think, Jeanie raised a good question. If you have a bank, are you really, can you really therefore preclude them from doing a payday lending of their own?
What about like these micro loan nonprofit organizations, you know, that, that do, yeah.
Yeah.
They're not a bank.
Or anybody doing the crowdfunding kinds of fundraising activities.
Right. I appreciate the, I appreciate the approach that was trying, attempted here, which was kind of to finesse this whole thing, but I'm not sure. I think there's just, I think
I, I'm wondering
the risk without weighing.
I'm wondering if it needs to say, you know, financial institutions are allowed, with the exception of payday lending, and then very carefully define what payday lending is.
Right.
And, you know, that may be a blind man trying to describe an elephant, but presumably there's some way of doing that.
I like that approach.
Yeah.
That's the new definition that needs to be added in here, is payday lending, so that you can discuss what practices that you're trying to avoid.
Well, it is, it is up here, but maybe we shouldn't eliminate financial institutions.
But I think what John and I are saying is, just like we have a definition for banks, and a definition for office, and a definition for this, that.
Oh, define payday.
The other thing, we should have a definition, a line item that says payday lending business, and then give the definition of that, so that we can, that way we can say it excludes that, and we know exactly what that is, and that may help differentiate between what a bank does in terms of cash advances.
Because in fact, we really
You didn't tell me to turn off my cellphone.
We really do want to allow other, any and all other sorts of financial institutions, broadly speaking, in our town.
I agree.
From private equity to venture capital, to brokerage firms, to micro lending, to a whole raft of things that we probably can't even list at this juncture.
Okay.
Okay. So any more discussion? If not, I would, I would entertain a motion. We need to make a recommendation to council. Don't all speak at once.
Well, the nature of the changes we're proposing are rather extensive.
Mm-hmm.
So the question is, is are we actually, what are our options, I guess? Because to say no in its current state, you know, try again, or is it to say yes, but
So
Well, if what I'm hearing, the commission is supportive of the idea of it
The concept
of excluding payday lending and check cashing businesses from either the bank definition or from the financial institution definition.
I think they're just trying to better define it.
And, and that, and if, the question being, does the proposed definition preclude other desirable business, existing businesses in town? Or is it, in fact, too broad to be effective? And, you know, is another approach to keep the existing definition, but then say that payday lending and check cashing is specifically not within that definition? I think, you know, we're still talking about the same ordinance, generally, as it's been advertised. I don't think we would be looking at different parts of the code. We might go back and then clean up. I think Commissioner Bruin's point about, well, if we're changing the terms and then we're, we're using different terms in other parts of the code that are similar, we should really clarify that and use a consistent term throughout. I think, for me, what I'm hearing is, could be a positive recommendation to council. Some concern about the structure of the definition that we could vet with the city attorney.
That the definition of banks is too, and financial institutions is too narrow, and perhaps should be broadened, and that, equally importantly, the, that perhaps
And that
Being, being clear that financial institutions are allowed, but that only very specific ones are not allowed.
And then I think what we would do is, in the interest of addressing the moratorium and getting an ordinance back before council, what this will do is get them, give staff an opportunity to really make sure this language is careful enough to meet the commission's And then if the council needs to, you know, if we can figure it out within the context of what we've advertised, which I think we can, then the council will have an ordinance that they can act on that's substantially, I think, consistent with what we're talking about tonight. And then, but if not, then they could reaffirm the moratorium, and if there was a substantial change, come back to the planning commission.
Then could we make a, could we make a, could we approve the concept, but not approve the wording?
Well, we would make a recommendation to council that perhaps they may want to keep the ordinance, but change some of the definitional wording, so that it's, in one case, broader and in the other case, narrower.
I was trying to, like, you think
Well, can I make an attempt?
Make it approve what it is they've given us, but still send it back to the
Okay.
Do you want to attempt that motion?
I'm hesitant. If we, if we've, if council has reviewed this wording and thought it was okay, and staff reviewed it and thought it was okay, why would, if we review it and don't think it's okay, why would we approve it? I think it requires a couple more weeks. It should come back as it should be, if we want, if, I don't feel comfortable approving something that, as I read it, doesn't, doesn't sound to me like it's going to do what we want it to do. So I don't want to approve it and say, try to fix it. I want them to fix it, bring it back, and then approve it.
We need, they need something that's enforceable, and we want to make sure that it's enforceable.
I, in, as I mentioned earlier, in talking to city council, when I raised a couple of these questions earlier on the definition, her view was that if we saw some things that were perhaps needed clarity, that we could include that in our recommendation, and that she, she felt comfortable that, between staff and herself, that the appropriate changes could be made, so that when it came back to council, as long as we were okay with the intent of the ordinance, that all we were doing was, was looking to provide some more clarification. And I personally am comfortable with that, because I don't, again, I've, I've sat in at least one of the council meetings, I don't think the intent of the council is to preclude any of the financial services. They were grappling with how to, as I said, describe, describe the elephant.
I don't, I just wanted to add, I don't think they had these definitions before them. It was really just an idea of what to do.
Okay.
And then the city attorney worked
So, Jeanie, were you going to make a motion?
I can make an attempt.
Okay.
I mean, maybe, maybe we can do a straw poll in terms of comfort in moving something forward with very explicit direction. Is that the, are most of us comfortable with that?
Well, I'd like to see
I don't want to hear.
I'd like to see a motion and see if it's second, and then
Okay. Here's the one that we can see if it'll fall flat.
We can, we can figure out where we are.
Okay. One clarifying question. David, are we, we have a temporary moratorium, right? Is there a time sensitivity to this, and could you shed some light on that, science?
It's a 45-day moratorium from April 10.
And then it was extended, another 45 days, I believe, David.
Didn't it get, yeah, it got extended, right? Which
I wasn't aware of that.
It was
So that was
I thought there was an extension.
Was it that one, or was that, yeah, that was this one?
Oh, for an additional 90, so
Or the passing, whatever.
So, May 8, right.
The only reason I'm, I'm asking that is because if there's ample time for it to come back, you know, do we want to consider it doing it that direction instead? If this is very time sensitive, then I would definitely say we should be moving it forward with very explicit direction. Do you want to try going forward?
It's
Could we not, could they not just put in, I mean, this is a second moratorium, right? That one expired and they put one in place, and if this one expires, why can't they put another one in place?
I think, I think we've got about four and a half months from April. Math is right.
We've got three months from May, so May, June, August.
So it puts me into August.
Yeah. But we also have practical reality that
That new commissioner's coming in.
This group is being reconstituted. We have one more meeting left.
Right.
So I would like to, to the extent possibly there
If it
come forward, if, if we can come to consensus on a recommendation, I'd like to. If not, you know, I'd like us to figure out how we can do it.
Can we bring it back in two weeks?
I think it'd be sufficient to move on the intent of it, motion the concerns separately, so those are kind of captured. And it's not uncommon to have an ordinance that's not fully developed, as long as the intent is clear, and then we work it out with the council with the specific
So I'd like, Jeanie, if you want to make a motion, let's do so, and let's see where it goes.
So can we try doing this in one motion, did you say, David, or not?
Well, I think it would be clear to, to make, it certainly could be one motion.
Okay. Because I was going to say, move recommendation to approve an ordinance, okay? The word is an, not this, ordinance, of the Los Altos City Council amending the Los Altos Municipal Code Title 14, zoning Article 2, entitled definitions, to, one, add a definition of banks that is expanded beyond the draft we have, broader definition, so as not to, and then you can give the examples that we've given in terms of VCs and brokers and investment bankers, et cetera. And amending the definition of office, to prohibit the establishment and expansion and relocation of payday lending and check cashing businesses. And to add a separate definition for payday lending, so that's to capture what the actual intent of what we're trying to exclude from our town. And to strike or be consistent in our terminology usage throughout the rest of the zoning ordinances, such as in 14, 14.34.40.
Okay. There's a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. We've got a second. Any discussion?
I think what that accomplishes is we're not actually pushing this one.
Right, right.
Which is, which is
Right.
I would also suggest that they elicit the expertise of people who work in financial institutions. institutions in drafting this.
Yeah, as I was-
Right, that would be, that would be a separate one of our recommendations that we want, I want to get some, the, the staff and city attorney to, to try and work with professionals to-
So, so can we-
Make sure the definitions are all encompassing.
Yeah, so if we can make sure that, I know council's asking for action minutes, so if we need to put it into a motion in order to get it captured, then that's fine, but otherwise, I want to make sure that we are, we do capture, because what I read and all, does not capture some of these things that John is articulating as well, in terms of that we use people in the financial services businesses to help in putting eyes on the definition, to ensure that it encapsulates what we're intending. Two, that we also understand what we're, what banks are doing, and again, by bringing experts in on this definition, to help, to help us understand this whole thing about the banks providing cash advances, and making sure that that is not excluded, that I don't believe that is the intention here. So, again, understanding what banks are doing, and to ensure that our definitions do not preclude them providing the service that they already provide.
But presumably, we also want to make sure that if banks decided to get into a payday lending situation, that presumably we, we want to preclude that. So if, you know, XYZ Bank said, okay, we are now going to set up a service where we are going to charge 400% and do payday lending for, for, you know, unbankable people who don't have bank accounts, we would, our intention, and I don't want to put words here, but I think from our discussion, the intention is to preclude that even if it were under the, the umbrella of a traditional banking organization. Mike, you're looking-
What if they charge 200% or 150%?
Well, that's part of the reason I'm asking the question. You know, if it's not 400%, but if it's-
What's acceptable?
30%, you know?
Just, just we need, we need expert, expert eyes to examine.
Okay, all right. So, all right. So we had a motion, we had a second, we had discussion. Any more discussion? All in favor of the recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes five, nothing.
So, so just, I, I-
So, we've gone too fast for you, David, sorry.
The, I understand the basic motion is to approve in ordinance prohibiting payday, and in concept, add the bank definition, but make sure it's broader to include those uses that are customary in town, and, and desired, and that amend the office to exclude payday, and add a payday definition, revise the code to use consistent terms. And then, that was the basic motion that was seconded, and then we had a discussion, which I was perceiving to be an amendment to the motion, but was that a separate?
I thought that was, were simply recommendations to get professionals, and the, the-
So the question is, David, to you, with action minutes and all, do we need to put that into the form of a motion, that we are recommending that council seeks the, the expert, yeah, council, I'm not talking legal counsel, but, so do we need to put that in a separate motion to capture those other two items?
I think that would be, I think I would prefer that, because then there's no question about the form.
So let me throw this out. We, and, and this is an interesting term. This, the way the original amendment, ordinance is written, is it prohibits the institutions of payday lending and check cashing, but doesn't necessarily prohibit the activity.
Right, it's, there's a business and profession code definition.
Right. So, so again, I would just simply ask the question, if a local bank in town decided to do payday lending, the, the, the ordinance as presently doesn't preclude the activity, it precludes the institution. And so, to me, there's a very interesting question, which I'm not qualified to answer, which is, what do you do about that? Well, maybe we should simply just point out that the, it, it, it's, it's precluding the institution, not necessarily the activity.
Right. A good, a good case in that is, an overdraft charge by a bank, you know, $45. It could be a $10 overdraft-
Right.
You know, or whatever, charging you 6,000%.
Right. But, no, but, but my point is, it, it wouldn't, again, the question is, if a, a federally chartered bank decided to go into payday lending-
Is it the, yeah, is it the practice of doing it, or is it an-
The institution.
An institu, a standalone institution doing it?
And if it-
And what's the difference? Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, that's an interesting question.
So, yeah, I think, I think, I think this is, it's, this is more complex than I think we originally understood. The intent was, was a great intent, but I think the implementation is what's a little bit more complex than maybe this first draft is showing us.
And, and it could be that, that we can prepare an ordinance that meets these concerns, or not. I mean, council might decide to just go ahead and put something on the books, knowing there's some questions, knowing there's maybe some more work to do with it.
So, maybe what we should do is, I think Jeannie wanted to make a motion, so we should perhaps proceed with that, and then maybe we can simply pose to council our, our uncertainty as to whether it's the institution or the activity that they are really trying to prohibit, because it looks to us like it's the activity that's being prohibited, the, the institution that's being prohibited, not necessarily the activity. And that would be a question-
That may be, that may be fine. That may be what the council wants.
That may be fine.
But, yeah.
So, Jeannie, you, you had a motion you were gonna make.
No, I, we're trying to make the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You know, I understand that council can basically do whatever council wants to do, but I would just hope that what we're talking about here, and what's in the position that staff would take, is we have time on our side. So rather than adopt something, anything, and come back to it, I, I just don't see what the advantage of doing that is versus saying, let's let the process work its way, and if, if, if council needs to, they can send this back, so that it can be done properly and right the first time. I just, I don't understand this concept of putting something in there, if we have three months to do this, and let's get it done in the three months and be done with it.
The right way.
Because this is something that, again, I think we've demonstrated, it's sufficiently complex, and I think there is clear advantage to us as a community to have more eyes on this, looking at what we're, what we're really trying to accomplish, and ensuring that our zoning accomplishes that. So I would hope that they would actually choose not to just put something, anything on the books, but would in fact-
Right.
Say, let's do it right. We have the time to do it right, so let's go and do it right, and take advantage of all the eyes on that.
We absolutely, if something that's enforceable. If it's not enforceable, this can really cause, open a can of worms.
But I, but I think, you know, the council was looking to get-
Right.
Public input. We haven't, for better or worse, we have not gotten any public input. They were looking, hopefully, to get another set of eyes and ears. I think we were accomplishing that, and I think, you know, because it, it's, I think, you know, forwarding the rec, the recommendation to council is probably the best thing, and, and if they can sort it out themselves, I mean, they're, they're perfectly capable of doing that, and if they want us to take another look at it, we can. But I think we've achieved what we, we were asked to do, which was make sure that it had a public hearing from the planning commission before it proceeded. So, Jeannie, you were gonna make another motion relative to-
Seeking financial expertise.
Financial-
Do you want, do you want to try cracking that one, or do you want me to?
Because the commission believes that the code as drafted is overly broad, and may eliminate too many financial institutions that are desirable, we would like to see-
Too narrow.
As, as drafted, it's overly narrow, too narrow, narrowly constructed. Yes. Not overly broad. I'd like it to be overly broad. That we would like council or staff to elicit the expertise of individuals from financial institutions to better draft an appropriate, appropriate language, so that it's really narrowly tailored to limit a very small segment of financial institutions, namely payday lending businesses.
Okay. There's a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes five, nothing. David, does that give you enough information for your needs at this point?
I think so, but I need to ask, so this is, the, the, the proposed code is too narrowly constructed?
Financial, financial services is too narrowly defined, and so we're asking for whoever revises the draft, that they call upon the expertise of somebody in the financial services industry, to make sure that the financial services and banking is broadly defined, and conversely, that the things we're trying to prohibit are very clearly narrowly defined.
Right.
Does that capture it?
That's exactly, yes. And I can't wait to see David's magic on paper.
Okay. So, talking about magic, commission reports, and do we have a report, Board of Adjustments hasn't met in decades. ANS, you're it.
That's me. ANS, we had three residential properties come before us and approved them all.
Good. You did a good job.
Not a, the only, the only controversy I think we, or the only thing we had was requesting staff to make sure we have something about protection of the creek, one of the properties abutting to the creek, but I think everything went really, really well.
Okay. And anybody attend a recent council meeting?
I might.
I'm sorry?
I might attend the one day.
Okay. I think, Roni, you're, you're, you on for next Tuesday?
I don't know.
I thought, isn't that one I-
We switched.
I, I think I'm on Tuesday.
You're on Tuesday.
I think I'm on, I'm on Tuesday. It's on my calendar.
Yes, you're on Tuesday.
Okay.
That's the one we switched.
Okay, yes, I'm on.
For some reason, I thought it was last week already.
Okay. All right. Any future agenda items that people are interested in discussing? We have exactly one meeting left of this duly constituted group. All right. If there's no other competent business become before this group, I'm going to adjourn. Thank you.